Well, let's hope Jason gets here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hope he's not on Eastern because he might never make it here.
I know.
Because now, you know, now it's on the North, which I'm not complaining because it needs to be done, but I was like, oh.
Yep. Well, at least he shows up. We wouldn't be able to have the meeting without it.
Yeah.
I guess we could do our work-study session, but that'd be about it.
I don't know if we could.
No, just want to have a quorum.
Yeah.
It's posted for after the meeting.
Do you want to tell everybody we don't have a quorum so we have to wait?
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, we're waiting on one council person to show up so we have a quorum. They should be here just shortly.
There he is. Mr. Quorum.
Yay. How's it going, Jason?
I'm playing with clapping, but you look very stressed.
It's all right.
Glad you could join us.
With us, call the meeting to order. We call for the roll, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams? Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Cam? Lynn Lewis?
Would you stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item C is a proclamation declaring May twenty first through twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three is National Public Works Week. Like to read this proclamation. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance for sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people in the community. And whereas the public works personnel of the City of Moore are involved in maintenance, planning, design, and construction of streets, transportation facilities, parks, playgrounds, open space, creeks, paths, storm drains, storm water treatment, public buildings, recycling operations, solid waste and environmental programs and facilities, right-of-way management, and emergency planning and response. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Moore to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, infrastructure, and services. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Work Association. Now therefore, in the name, in, uh, in, in the place of Glenn Lewis, our mayor, I, Adam Webb, as vice mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty first, twenty seven, or thirty, twenty-seventh is National Public Works Week. In the City of Moore and urge all citizens to join in the salute and pay tribute to our public works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Tony? Item two is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Item C, approve, reestablish, and, and moving expenses in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents for the relocation of the Tillison Cabinet Company Incorporated. They displaced business currently located at the hundred and thirty-seven Southeast Fourth Street for construction and maintenance of the Southeast Fourth Street Railroad Underpass Project. The federal law requires payment for relocation under the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Row Property Acquisition Policies Act of nineteen seventy. Item D, approve the final one-year extension of the public works maintenance contract with Silver Star Construction Company with an eight percent increase to the base contract amount. Item E, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of four million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item passes. We'll recess the city council meeting and convene the public hearing. We'll review, discuss, and receive citizen input and comments regarding the fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four budget as required by eleven Oklahoma statute seventeen dash two zero eight.
Vice Mayor and Council, the highlights of the proposed budget, the city's proposed budget totals a hundred and twenty-three million, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. This is a decrease of thirteen point two million from the fiscal year twenty-three budget. The decrease is primarily due to completion of the two thousand and twenty-one residential street bond projects and the expiration of the ARPA funding. This budget funds a total of thirty-two new positions for full and part-time employees. These positions will be filled at various intervals during the year. Total capital outlay of five point nine million dollars is distributed as follows: one point seven million from MPWA, two million from the general fund, six hundred thousand from hotel motel tax, one point six million from the half-cent sales tax. Water sewer, water sewer and drainage projects totaling three point one million include an eight-inch water line in Southgate, twelve-inch water line loops on Indian Hills Road and Sunny Lane, Westmore Sewer Line, drainage on Southeast Fourth and Bryant, drainage on Oak Ridge and Southmore. Work will start on five projects that were noted in the Water Master Plan, and four projects in the Water Master Plan have been completed. Residential street reconstruction is proposed for in Ward One, Southwest Seventh, Broadway to Southwest Eighth, and on Southwest Eighth, Broadway to Howard. In Ward Two, Decker Drive to the West End, Regina Drive to the West End, and Everly Drive from Broadway to Freeman. In Ward Three, Markwell Avenue from Northwest Sixth to Northwest Seventh Place, and Bear Drive from Northwest Fifth to Janeway. In Old Town, Southwest First Street from Chestnut to Howard. Additional maintenance on other streets will also be performed. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is budgeted for sidewalk construction repair. Public safety outlay includes six police vehicles, sixty tasers, twelve radios, fifteen bulletproof vests, eight drones, one drug identifier, partial payment on a fire engine, an F-550 rescue squad vehicle, nine radios, an outdoor warning siren, and miscellaneous other equipment. Parks projects include the fountain repair on North Shields Boulevard, compact tractor, a wood chipper, an expansion of the Little River parking lot, more work in Veterans Park, park cameras, lights for the Palmer Lee Park Basketball Court, a gooseneck trailer, and after the aquatic season is over to repaint the pool slides. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and as you know, this is for public comment, so anyone who wants to give up and comment.
We have one person sign up to speak on this. Linda Espinoza Ross. Yes, could you please just come up, state your just, uh, state your name, address? That's okay.
Okay.
Just, just one second here. Just state your name and address for the record, please, and just know that there's a five-minute time limit for each person.
Oh, do I, do, are you timing me? Like, do you make the music?
Someone does, yeah.
Uh, my name is Linda Espinoza Ross. I am at seven oh five Penn Lane, up the road, obviously. And I did have some budgetary concerns, unfortunately. I saw that you, uh, wait, is this the part where I talk at you, or do you talk back to me?
You go ahead.
Tell us your concerns.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm just making sure. So, um, a little background on me, been here my whole life, and, oh shoot, this is my five minutes. Um, I have a master's in social work with a focus on community development and how that affects infrastructures in particular to peoples in poverty. So I did notice that you cut the budgetary for the library fifty percent. It was two hundred thousand last year. It's a hundred thousand this year. While also, which I love, the Moore Rec Center is two million dollars versus the one million dollars last year. I was wondering how we're, why that was, and hopefully the unintended commodification of community that we're going to have in our, in Moore, Oklahoma. Because I understand that you have to pay to go to the recreation center, and the library offers free services for people for differently abled. In, uh, involves many things for our community, teaching people how to use food stamps. And with the budgets, I think that'll really impact our community members that aren't able to go to, yes, some of these free community events, but you usually have to shell out to participate in other things. So I just wanted to know, you know, why are we cutting things?
The, as far as the library goes, the budget has not been cut for the library. We have, uh, yes, uh, we have, we have saved money in each of the last two years for, uh, design work for a potential new library, and so this hundred thousand dollars is just added to the other two hundred thousand dollars that was already saved for that.
I read the last, see, this is why I'm here. I read the la, and I was here anyway. I was like, oh no, that's not great. So I read it was the budget for two thousand and twenty-two was two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and now we have a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in the proposed budget for the library.
So that's for the design, we're, we're designing a new library, and that's for the design services.
You'll actually be voting on?
So, so the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars was for design work, and this is another hundred and thousand to go towards, towards the design work.
So we're gonna have a three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so it's not cutting the budget for the library. It's for the design work for the new library.
So this is, yeah, to design a new library on the Central Park area in that, and maybe you can go into a little bit more detail about the relationship with us and the Pioneer Library System, um, if that's applicable maybe to this conversation.
Yeah, I think it'll be, if you're an library advocate, you'll be happy to know you'll get to vote on a new library with expanded offerings. Pioneer Library operates the library, and we own the facility. And so this is just, uh, for the planning phase. We've traveled around, looked at various libraries, and spent over a year of work on it, I think, and so soon we'll be proposing to the people of Moore an option to vote, um, to build and construct a new library.
Okay, so we're not cutting, and so will there be more plans to add, you know, more events and things? Because I've noticed in the last three or four years, we've had less events and community, uh, gatherings at the library with our success in our more recreational center.
So that would be the Pioneer Library System that was responsible for that? So, yeah, we, I mean, we can certainly talk to the Pioneer, or, or get you in touch with Pioneer Library, who manages it.
Okay, well, have fun. I think that's all the questions I had. If y'all didn't have any for me. Okay.
And if you have any other questions, I know Adam's been very involved in the library, uh, of planning the new one, but I do think that it's something I didn't know before I started working with city council, that they rent that space back for us at a very, very reasonable rate, and then they're able to offer those services and that type of thing, so.
It is free to rent their rooms, everyone, if you just sign up a month in ahead, but a lot of people don't know that.
Right.
There's currently a sewing club on Tuesdays, and a lot of things for that, and I think our community needs to kind of broadcast that in Moore, which I love the rec center, but it's pretty busy and a lot of it runs up sometimes to do that, and I understand there's differently able people and different sensory issues. So I would like a little more broadcast, or marketing, everything's marketing, about, about our Pioneer Library System, because it's pretty rad.
Perfect. We'll pass that along.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up. Would anyone else like to speak on the proposed budget? Any council members? Okay, we'll recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item four, consider approval of a sales tax rebate agreement with QuickTrip Corporation.
Vice Mayor and Council, as you know, during the, uh, planning for, uh, QuickTrip at Twenty-seventh and I-35, as far as it was, part of that discussion was widening Northmore Avenue so the trucks could exit the south part of the facility there, and, uh, signalizing the intersection there on Shields and Northmore Avenue. The approximate cost of this is going to be one point six million dollars. QuickTrip has, has agreed to front the cost of this, uh, so we can get this done, and they will be repaid through the sales tax that they generate. So, and it, so in essence, what QuickTrip has done is giving us an interest-free loan to, uh, complete this project. Uh, Jake Barron from QuickTrip is here to answer any questions. Uh, otherwise recommend approval.
We have one person sign up to speak, Patrice Williams. Please state your name, address, um, for the record, and just know that there's a five-minute time limit for each person to speak.
Patrice Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street. I'm kind of confused, and this is really just some understanding. We're voting on an agreement that looks like it's already been agreed to because they're building. So I'm real confused about that.
So we're voting on the agreement for the, to, for them to widen the road, and how, and how they get paid back for, instead of us saying, we're gonna, we're gonna front the money, we're, QuickTrip's saying, we're gonna build, we're gonna give you the money for the road, we're, we're gonna pay you, and City of Moore's gonna pay them back through a, for, through a sales tax rebate, like we did with Target, Warren Theater, all that. This is how we brought, Costco, how we bring a lot of businesses in. So the, this is the agreement for the sales tax rebate.
Okay, I understand that, but it says in the sales tax rebate agreement, it has been agreed by both parties in a statement, separate agreement, that Moore shall arrange for these improvements to be made, and QuickTrip shall pay to Moore the cost of such improvements. So has it already been voted on? Why are we, I mean?
It hasn't been voted on. It's been agreed by both legal sides, so we're not agreeing on something that's in draft form. This is a finalized form that both parties agree to legally, but it has to be approved by the city council and mayor.
Okay, so if the city council doesn't approve it, what's QuickTrip gonna do? Quit building?
No, I imagine they'd still build, and most likely we'd still have to widen the road, but the City of Moore would pay for the one point six million dollars of widening and infrastructure improvements, sure.
And then we'd still get the tax dollars.
Yeah. So instead, they're paying for that upfront, and we're getting an interest-free loan. And I, actually, there's more details on it, and you probably read this, but for everyone who hasn't maybe read it, that it's, as long as they get that one point six million dollars, if for some reason they don't, um, they don't have enough, uh, revenue to meet that, then they'll only be paid back partially.
Right.
Well, it still seems to me by an agreement, that means that it's already been agreed to.
But it hasn't been voted on at the council yet.
It hasn't been approved. It's been legally agreed to, yes. That's the way every city operates. If not, we'd spend a lot of time with our legal voting on something that hasn't been validated.
The agreement's made without the city of Moore.
We don't know what we're voting on before the attorneys agree on it.
Right.
Okay?
So, so we, so we've seen this in our packet, um, that this, the attorneys have agreed on it. We've seen it in our packet, and now they're asking for us to vote on it today. So we have seen it, um, and asked all the questions we want to ask and everything, and now we, this, like, this is how we vote on a lot of things. It comes in, the final draft is in our packet, and we
You can come back out.
Yeah, and we, and we then say, okay, we're, everybody's in agreement, and we vote on it.
I just want to say, just the way you treated me just then, we are not evil because we ask questions of the city. We don't think the city's evil. We ask questions because we're citizens of the city. So there's no, no reason for you to do what you just did to me.
You, you spread a lot of rumors online, Ms. Williams. Take a seat. Your five minutes is up, I believe. Is it up?
What, what rumors I'm spreading?
Please, please take a seat. Did, would any of the council like to speak? We call for the vote, please.
Oh, I, I'll make a motion.
Or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Uh, Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider approval of an agreement with TEIM Design P L L C in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for professional engineering services for Northwest Twenty-seventh Street and Shields Boulevard Intersection Improvement Project.
Vice Mayor and Council, as it says, this is for the design of the intersection of Shields Boulevard and, uh, Northwest Twenty-seventh Street. Uh, it's in terrible shape. Uh, we want to go ahead and widen it for, along Twenty-seventh Street so that we can provide a left turn, going southbound, uh, from, from westbound to southbound onto Shields, which we think will be a, a route that the trucks will take on the, from the E Express. So, uh, we want to go ahead and approve the intersection, and, and Team Design is the, the group that we'd like to utilize for this particular project and would recommend approval.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item six, consider approval of the annual contract with Perry Weather for an integrated weather risk management system in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars per year.
Assistant Mayor and Council, this will be for the Buck Thomas Baseball Softball Fields and also the aquatics area. And it will be notification by phones. It will not be a siren. And a standard warning is ten miles. So recommend approval.
So this is the text service that, um, sends out notifications for weather. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Lightning, lightning specifically.
Do the
And we've used this company before.
No, this is the first.
This is a new one, okay.
And do they have to have, uh, but, do the, uh,
Patrons.
Thank you. Patrons out there, do they have to sign up for it?
No.
The service, it just notifies anybody?
So it's the organizations?
Oh, perfect.
That are notified.
Okay.
And the pool.
Okay.
Staff.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider approval of a contract with Accent Painting Incorporated for the painting of the Lazy River in the Station Aquatic Center in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fourteen cents is the lowest responsible quote.
Assistant Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item, uh, for our Lazy River, and we prefer to paint it this year, but if not due to weather, we may have to wait until the fall.
So it'll be painted before the season opens, is that?
If we can get it in, we will. If not, we'll
The next two weeks.
Paint it after the season.
Okay. How often do we have to paint it?
It's scheduled, I think, every three years.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item eight, consider awarding RFP number twenty-three zero zero nine to the City of Moore Public Transportation Feasibility Study to Olson in the amount to not exceed ninety-five thousand dollars.
Vice Mayor and Council, on January, January third, uh, the city received two responses for this request for proposal. Staff conducted interviews, and each team was scored based on their project approach, team, and past experience. Olson scored the highest out of the two firms. The contract amount for the transportation feasibility study is not to exceed ninety-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand of that will be funded through CDBG funds. The remaining seventy thousand will be funded with the budgeted general funds. Staff recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item nine, consider declaring a two thousand and thirteen Ford Police Intercepter Utility Vehicles, more particularly described as Exhibit A, as surplus, and authorize the three donations to the Oklahoma City Community College Police Department.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is one of many, uh, surplus requests that we'll be making as we transition the new cars into the fleet, similar to what we do each and every year. Uh, we're asking to donate these three cars to Oklahoma City Community College Police Department. Uh, we routinely, we're very blessed in Moore, and so we try to take care of smaller agencies. This is an opportunity to do that. We'd recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item ten, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of up to five pallets of Pulser II calcium, let's see, Hypochlorite Brigettes fifty, uh, pa, pell to be used for the care and cleanliness of the station's aquatic center pool for the twenty-three season from Sunbelt Pools in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents as the lowest written quote.
Yes, this is the, uh, to allow us to purchase more pallets rather than just one that's under the seventy-five hundred dollar limit, and that way we're saving money on our shipping. If we get, we can store up to five pallets at any one time. So it's just a better financial deal to purchase five at a time.
So this will be one purchase, probably of many throughout. I was gonna say, that sounds like a lot, but that's not a lot.
Instead of one a month.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Once every two mo, uh, twice a month.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. We'll recess the city council meeting and convene, and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item eleven is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. We'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item twelve is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. And we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting. Louis is not here.
Who is it?
Is it Melissa?
Is it me?
It might be you.
Okay. Uh, can you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Still here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis? Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Cam? Louis Williams?
Item fourteen is the consent docket. Uh, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting held April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. We call the vote.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
We'll now resource the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Item fifteen is new business. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have Barry Williams sign up to speak. Please state your name, address, and there is a five-minute time limit.
I'm sure each one of y'all got one of these. Do you need one? Barry Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street, Moore, Oklahoma, seven three one six oh. I don't know how this happens. I emailed all of you this. Nobody's got a raise up there since ni, April of nineteen ninety-nine. Ninety-nine dollars or a hundred dollars a month, to me, is absolutely ridiculous. Y'all deserve more. Period. So that's why I came up with this. At least five hundred dollars a month for the councilman, for the one, Adam Webb, it'd be seven hundred and fifty dollars a month because he'd end up being vice mayor, and the mayor would get at least a thousand dollars a month because nineteen ninety-nine, guys, is a long time, and I'm sorry, but someone should have brought this up a long time ago. How do we get this done to where people can vote on it in the next general election? Go.
Someone has to be willing to ask for it, but
I'm asking, I'm asking for it.
Well, I think the council has to vote to put it on the ballot, do we not? Uh, so we would have to vote if we were, it has to be something, you, you describe this. This isn't my day job. You describe it, Brian.
Who, who makes? Who, who makes the resolution?
The council.
Does the council do it, and the resolution would then be approved by city council, and that's why it'd be, uh, without the... I'm asking.
Okay.
Please.
And I know Brooke sent us, um, earlier today, some, what other cities, their salaries are and stuff, and so, yeah.
I tried to look in it up, nobody's consistent.
Yeah, it's not.
And I think that y'all put enough time behind the scenes, having to read through at least 212 pages of stuff, to get paid actually more money than what you're getting paid for, because to me, you're just volunteering.
So I'll give my perspective on this, just kind of a little bit of a background, and, um, forgive me if I'm repeating any information that anyone in here knows, so we're a city manager-led council, which means, um, this isn't our day job. We all have, um, extensively different backgrounds, and the reason we work things like agendas or, uh, resolutions or agreements, we don't work them. We have the, one of the most talented staffs in the city, in my opinion, that work that behind the scenes to make sure everything's in row. Uh, Brian, make sure we're doing everything legally, under the right, funds of money, uh, that comes to Brooks, Brooks signs off on it, we have someone that runs our budgets. So, yes, we do spend a lot of time, I see this as a volunteer, or, I see this as a